Is everybody about ready to start our business tonight? I think it's six o'clock, Ms. Whitby.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. If you'll call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Vouch?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
The court is present, sir.
Thank you. I invite you to rise. If Alderman Taylor's gonna lead our prayer and pledge.
Please bow your head with me. Father God, thank you for this opportunity to be before you on this very blessed and wonderful, beautiful evening. Father, as we enter into the holiday season, we just ask for your blessings and your grace upon us and all of those who are less fortunate than us so that maybe we can look upon them to give from our hearts to make their holiday seasons a little better. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name and we pray. Amen.
Amen.
May your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move. I defer to Alderman Ross for the second on the minutes.
What?
I defer to you on the second on the minutes.
Oh, we're not there yet, are we?
On the motion.
Minutes. Where we are.
Wait, are we? But they've been amended. Do we need to amend it?
To change your name?
No, no, on the minutes. The minutes. Okay.
No?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ross, White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump here just a little bit to something different. We talked about it at budget hearing last week about moving the December the 26th council meeting to Tuesday, December the 27th without objection. Or do I need a voice vote on that?
Was it December or November?
Did I say November?
You just said December.
December, Christmas.
Okay.
Yeah, December the 26th is moved to December the 27th. How about, let's do a voice vote. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, let it be, Ms. Whitby.
Thank you.
Okay. Communications, anybody wanna pull a communication? Seeing none, how about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White? Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go into unfinished business.
You had a couple of people that signed up to speak. Want to do?
Okay. Okay, let's do that. First one to speak, public comment on O-1679 is Tom Brooks. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Tom Brooks and I'm a member of the parish advisory council, Immaculate Conception Catholic Church in North Little Rock. Several months ago, we gained permission to put an electronic sign on the property and electricity is now run. We went down to get a permit to put the sign and this is totally my fault. I've never really read through the thing and it indicated that the size of the sign was what we used as one of the examples in showing what the electronic sign could look like. And so, I think I passed out what we would like to put up in terms of a sign that's remarkably similar in size to the Levy Baptist Church. And I have pictures of the Levy Baptist Church if you wanna see it. I gave one to Beth and Debbie. But the Immaculate Conception sign that we propose to do would be 56 inches by 94 inches. That's for the display. The size of the sign itself, the base and the top, would not change. And some of the reasons for that is that the sign, I think, was like three by eight that we proposed, like a ribbon. And now, it's kinda like our TVs that used to be somewhat boxed in nature that are now horizontal and somewhat rectangular in size. And so, we'd like to get into the, you know, the current size of an electronic sign and so we'd ask that a variance be granted or an amendment, whatever the procedure be, Charlie, to allow that to happen. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, that's all I have.
Go ahead, Ms. Witcher.
Okay, Mr. Brooks, have you already ordered your sign?
Do we have? No, as a matter of fact, we have not. We have the proposal that we want, but I'm, you know, a little bit strange sometime, but not totally crazy, Murray. And so, we have not paid for it nor ordered the sign until the permission's granted.
Okay. All right. And I will tell you, you know, you and I have had discussions about this sign for a number of years, the proposed sign. One of the reasons why I've been so hesitant, because there are two churches across the street from you and they both want similar signs. So, once this goes up, Mr. Height and I will be hard pressed to tell them no. I just want you to know that. You know, what a bind we're in, so.
Mr. Height?
Are we gonna go ahead and call this now since we're discussing it and asking questions? Or you want, we're gonna hold it till?
Might as well.
Okay, all right, good. Then, I'll save my comments till after we call.
Okay, I'm gonna pull a couple others out of order.
Okay.
So, why don't we, if that's okay, Tom, go ahead and sit down and we've got some people from northwest Arkansas here that need to get back on the road. So, I would like to pull R-16171 and then there's another O-1678. Deal with both of those right now, if that's okay. So, Ms. Whitby, will you pull R-16171, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution certifying local government endorsement of Zero Mountain Incorporated to participate in the tax-back program is authorized in Section 15427O6D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, and then let's jump over to ordinances and pull O-1678.
O-1678, an ordinance approving a waiver request to allow an eight-foot chain-link security fence around certain rural property located at 1400 Gregory Street in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
How about a motion to suspend?
Actually, that's my legislation, but please call it, so suspend the readings.
Excuse me.
There's a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
See, thank you very much. We'd like to welcome Zero Mountain to our corporate family here in North Little Rock. They're going to bring in at least 15 to 20 new jobs, starting off, and that's a great location for them to be in. So, welcome, and as I said earlier when we were meeting, to call us if you need us. Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting us go out of order. All right, let's go ahead and do IC's legislation here.
O-1679, Alderman Height?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 88O4, which granted a waiver to allow variances for a ground-mounted sign on property located at 7,000 JFK Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend all rules, then I'll discuss it.
Readings.
Second. I think.
Motion been made to suspend the readings by Mr. Height, seconded by Mr. Baxter. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes.
The reason that I put this on here for consideration only, and I know Mr. Brooks and I have had a couple, three, four conversations about this. It was kind of a rush one morning that he called me and about this needing to get this legislation on the next council meeting, meaning the next one after Thanksgiving. And so, I called Sean and Sean kinda filled me in on what was going on. And then I got a call back from Sean a little bit later and it seems that he had pulled a couple of strings and he had some friends over in the city attorney's office and he got this bit of legislation concerning this sign put on tonight's agenda. I still didn't at that point in time have my questions answered about whether or not we were violating or going against any ordinances about sizes or specifications of these type of signs across the city, plus the fact I didn't have any answers as to whether or not this sign may be violating any size restrictions due to our sign overlay district. So, that was the reason that I put this down for consideration only. And in the last couple of weeks, since I've gotten answers to my questions and I've talked to Sean on a number of occasions, I've decided that I'll be voting yes on this legislation when the vote comes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How about a motion, get it on the floor, then we'll...
I'll...
Motion.
They did.
We've already suspended the readings.
We suspended.
We suspended the readings. I'll make a motion that we adopt this legislation.
How about a second?
Second.
All right, questions? Ms. Ross?
Can Mr. Spencer tell us exactly how much of an increase in size that they're requesting?
The whole sign itself is the same size. The LED part of it is 20 inches taller.
Of 20 inches taller, not wider?
Not wider, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? Ms. White?
I'd like to ask Mr. Brooks a question.
Mr. Brooks?
Sorry, I had to ask you this when we were over here, but I didn't listen for an answer. The two papers you gave us, is it going to look, is it going to look like Levy Baptist sign or is it going to look like this sign?
Well, neither one. Size-wise, it will look like the Levy Baptist sign, I wanted to grant it perspective. The sign is color.
It is going to be color.
But I will promise you, there will not be any Pope Francis bobbleheads or anything like that on there, any cartoon characters. And I promised Debbie that, and my word is good. And I'm now saying that in a public forum, so if there is an issue and I get a call, I think I still have maybe enough influence there to get that thing stopped. And just to make one more sentence answer to that, two weeks ago, we had a festival at the church. There's like 1,500 foot of frontage and there must have been close to 1,400 signs and yard signs and stuff like that, which will not happen. I mean, it looked extremely unsightly with the yard signs. So, what hopefully the electronic sign will do, or what it will do, 'cause pastor told me this too, is we're gonna stop all those yard signs up through there. And if there becomes an issue, I tell you, Ms. White, if you'll call me or call them, the people there behind the same opinion you have that we don't want to make the area unsightly.
Right, and the brightness of the sign can easily become very distracting to drivers.
If it is, let us know. There's a regulation, you have an ordinance on that, that regulates that lightness. And I know sometimes that doesn't pertain to a specific event. You're saying, "Well, it may be allowed, but it's still too bright." And we can fix that if it is.
It, to me, is mainly the white light that, if there's a lot of white light in a sign, that's when it's very, very hard.
I'm 71 years old, I don't even understand how those things work, I really.
I just know they can be really distracting, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vouch?
The part of, this is for you, the part of the sign that says the Immaculate Conception, is that also under LED or is that similar to Levy where it's hard copy on top of the board?
Hard copy, just the name of the regular to regular.
And how often, I don't remember what the rules were, to change the message on the sign, is there, I remember how much was?
You have a very thick manual that pertains to those signs.
I believe it's over 15 seconds. Isn't that right, Sean?
Thirty.
Thirty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Sean.
And Mayor, we do have constituents and residents in North Little Rock that every once in a while will time those signs and remind us if somebody's out of compliance.
Absolutely. Okay, on the motion.
Motion to adopt. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me say hello and welcome Sherwood Alderman Marina Brooks is in the audience and we're certainly glad that she's here. And, you know, Marina, I'm a little concerned that Tom seems to think he has a tremendous amount of influence at the church. Ah, that kinda scares me a little bit, so I'm going with, I'm going with your influence at the church, okay? All right. If you need anything, call Marina, don't call Tom. Okay, let's go back to a public comment regarding legislation and we have Patrick Stair, R-16178. Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor. R-16178 authorizes the city to potentially sell for development 500, 600 blocks of Main Street. As a resident of downtown in the area, I'm supporting that. It's nice to see a bare patch of dirt perhaps be developed and I think that'll help not only the neighborhood, but the whole city. I would like to point out and remind everybody that there's a farmer's market there. The Argenta Farmer's Market currently operates in that space. They've been operating here in downtown North Little Rock since 2008, predating some of you who are sitting up here. They are still a viable and very nice farmer's market. I go there every Saturday when they're open and I hope that the city, in selling the land out from under them, can provide some assistance to relocate them to some other place here downtown, preferably within walking distance again. Thank you.
I have been in contact with that group and we're trying to do something that makes everybody happy.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the unfinished business.
Yes, sir. O-1670, Alderman Robinson and Taylor.
We're gonna pull it.
O-1673, Alderman Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance to establish and lay off the North Little Rock Municipal Multipurpose Improvement District Number 37 Faulkner Crossing, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules and place it on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance to establish and lay off the North Little Rock Municipal Multipurpose Improvement District Number 37 Faulkner Crossing, third and final reading.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Hold it.
No, I did have, wait a minute. Is this Robert Harden? I do have something that was on my desk that was filed while I was out.
I asked for you to, Mayor, just call for a public hearing right now.
Okay, I can do that. I call a full public hearing on Improvement District Number 37 Faulkner Crossing. Anyone here to speak for or against that issue? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Be ready for a vote. On the motion.
Okay, on the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And I will include those documents with this. Consent agenda?
All right, anybody wanna pull anything from the consent agenda?
We need to pull our R-16172 so we can amend it.
Okay, any others?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. All right, where are we?
You have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus R-16172.
All right, call it, I mean, on the motion.
Normally, this is where you have everybody.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
R-16172, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment as surplus, providing for the auction thereof.
Move for adoption.
Second.
What are we amending?
This is a resolution, I had a question now.
We have an amendment, there's an item to add. There was outdoor Christmas lighting decorations that were used in the Burns Park display to be added to the list. I don't know if anyone else has a amendment that's, okay, you got it on your desk. That's what we're adding to the list.
All right, how about a motion to amend?
I should be in.
Okay, in a second, we got them both, okay? On the motion, to amend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Question over there.
Question over there, okay?
And here's the CNG dispenser. Can you give us what's going on with the CNG station? Is it shut down? Are we selling the parts out? What's going on?
Well, right now, if my memory serves me, we just got an update on that this week. We're running one generator right now, so it's not doing as well as we want. You know, we've made a run at a company that bought the one up in just north of Conway and they haven't told us if they would buy it from us or not. So, there's a really good chance after the first of the year that we're gonna have to make some big decisions on whether we're going to spend some pretty good money to update it and get it back going again to the level it should be before mothballing it. So, but I'm gonna guess that's gonna be after the first of the year. Ms. White?
So, with the I-30 changes, will the location of this still be viable for our city?
Yeah, it's just, you know, the price of gasoline and diesel's gotten so low right now that it's just not real popular, other than the units that we've got. And it's so hard to quick fill because we're only working with one pump, that our customers, AT&amp;T, I think being one of them, is using the facility over in Little Rock. So, we're not making any, not making any money. Ms. White? Ms. Ross, you got anything else?
Yeah, there was a question, is 2007 Neighborhood Services a camper? Is what, Neighborhood Services has a camper?
Dan, you know what that is?
Yeah, I got, I know what it is too, I think. In 2007, we got a trailer because we were working in the park all the time and we had events going on all the time and so we figured that would be a mobile place that we could have down there. We used it for a year and then we gave it to the street department for them to use and they used it and now, apparently, it's, as campers do, since it was used when we got it, it's in really poor shape and so that's why we're getting rid of it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, where are we?
Need a motion to adopt.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
New business, R-16178, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a real estate development and option to purchase agreement for property located on Main Street at Sixth and Seventh Streets with J. Chandler and Company Incorporated.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All right, we've got some, up until 5:00 today, we were tweaking the contract and we got that done with Mr. Chandler and our lawyer and his lawyer. And you wanna give us an executive summary of that?
Sure, and the best thing I could do is really, it, so it says page one of six, but the last two pages are just notary pages, right? So, we've only got four pages of the document. Most of that, you can see the last two pages are pretty much boilerplate. The easiest thing I could do is probably just kinda walk you through what it is, starting at the, now therefore in consideration of $100, right? So, we get $100 in the covenants that are within this agreement. We are selling an option to buy our property. The property's indicated, you know, graphically on Exhibit A to this resolution and then we have a legal description in one. The term of the option, you can see, is 120 days for that amount, but it can be extended up to 60 days for the price of $10,000. That $10,000 is non-refundable, but it would count against the purchase price. The option is to buy the property at $11 a square foot, so the theory being that during this kind of optional time that someone's doing their due diligence, they can decide whether or not, you know, our counterparty can decide whether or not to buy the property and the purchase price would be $11 a square foot. As you can see in paragraph four, we are retaining developmental control as, and it lists out pretty specifically architectural appearance, size, proposed use, external improvements, and everything similar to that. So, what you would expect to see is a plan that's going to come back to you as part of there's some pictures that kind of give you a concept of what the idea is right now. We did add a clause in that said, "We're not gonna be unreasonable in this. We're gonna be reasonable in approving the plan." But there's certainly a look and feel that we want downtown, and we'll expect those plans to comport with that. So closing will happen pretty quickly thereafter whenever they... Whenever we set our time, and work must begin within two years of closing, of the closing date. Our remedy for that, if work does not proceed, if we just can't get it across the finish line, even after the transaction has occurred, we'll be able to repurchase the property. So that's what our remedy is, is to buy it back. If we do buy it back, we buy it back at a 5% discount. So we would pay back 5% less, which really, I guess, just kind of, both in, from our perspective, incentivizes the developer to get with the project and to get it done, you know, according to the plan, but also protects us against the administrative expense and burden of managing this along the way to get it across the finish line.
The... John Chandler's here, and he is... Went with us to Fort Worth, and he shares our vision and excitement about this development, and I'm sure that he is going to hit the ground running and make something really neat happen. So if anybody's got any questions of John, he's available here. Seeing none. John, we're looking forward to working with you and excited about the opportunities. Thank you very much. Okay.
Do we need to amend?
Yes.
Amend in the contract?
Exhibit C.
All right, Mr. Witcher and Ms. Ross, first and second on that one. On the motion. To amend?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes. Move for adoption. Is amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
R-16179, Mayor Smith.
Thanks, John. Please call it.
A resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Tenesca Power Services Company for services related to participation in Mizo markets.
How about a motion?
No move. Second.
Anybody need a description or discussion on that?
Do we need to amend in that?
Yes.
Okay.
We do need to amend in Exhibit A. And I can tell you whatever you want to about this agreement. We went through some negotiations on this last week between the time that it was filed and then the time that it was emailed out. We got it finalized at that point, so we were happy with the risk model.
Okay. All right. On the motion to amend, how about Mr. Baxter? I got you.
Yes, absolutely. Make that motion.
Only got a second from Mr. Vouch. On the motion to amend?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
About a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Is amended.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-16180, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
No move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the grass-cutting expenses and liens? Seeing none. Close public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance O-1674, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance adopting a chapter on buildings and building regulations as part of the North Little Rock Municipal Code repealing certain code sections. First reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
About a second.
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Anybody need an update on this one? It's just kind of getting everything clear and concise from... Okay. How about a motion to adopt?
So...
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1675, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements to repair certain electric facilities serving WM Waste Management Renewable Energy LLC of Arkansas, authorizing the execution of a bill of sale. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ross.
Can we just have... I don't know if Mr. Bray or just kind of give us...
Absolutely. James, you wanna tell us what's going on here?
Back in March, during one of the storms, we were notified that we had a pole leaning in the swamp out by Tremble Road, Rixey Road. We went out and inspected with waders and a boat, and we were able to temporary that one pole off until we could figure out a way to get in there and replace it. While in there, we inspected some other poles in that area, and the beavers have been having a dining experience on six poles. I don't know why, after 12 years, they decided they liked penetrated poles.
Food fest.
Yes. We knew that we didn't have the equipment to do swamp work or work in that type of environment. So we just went out and asked two contractors, one out of state and one in state, to give us a rough price on what it would take to get those poles replaced. And the labor, one of them was a little over $69,000, and the other one was $72,000 and some change. We didn't like that price, so we thought about it. And Ron Osborne and myself got together, and we figured July, August, real dry, what we'd be able to get in and do the work. We didn't know it was gonna rain for eight days in July and August. So we finally got around to doing the work the last of October, first of this month. And we estimated the spans at 450 feet without wading through that quagmire to really get some good footage. So we rented a track hole, and even though it's dry, anything with that weight, it would just bury up, crack through the crust, bury up. So we ordered matting from a company out of Cersei, and their timbers bolted together four foot wide, 18 foot long, you might say. And you lay them four foot to four foot to make a road over the wet area. Well, we thought we were doing real well until we figured out we needed more matting, because we underestimated the span distances on the last two poles. So that's what this is about, to waive the bids on mostly the matting part of it. We had to go back and get about 700 more feet to be placed in the swamp to get the track hole to.
The original price we had on the matting was less than what's required for $20,000. And then when we ended up, we were short of matting, that pushed us over the $20,000. Right, James?
Yes.
But you're still saving money, right?
Bunch of money.
Good.
Yeah, I think the number was about $30,000 or $40,000 is what we're gonna save by doing it ourselves.
Yeah.
Jason?
I need an amendment in this title, because I don't know why that says includes a clause saying authorizing the execution of a bill of sale. This doesn't have anything to do with a bill of sale, and that needs to be deleted.
I'll make that amendment.
I have a question.
Shouldn't that be the execution of a purchase?
Shouldn't that be the execution of a purchase?
No, it's actually a rent. That's what it is.
That just needs to be deleted.
Alderman Ross made a motion. Was there a second?
Do we have a second? Questions, Mr. Baxter?
What are we doing to shut down the buffet for beavers?
Metal poles.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion to amend?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt? Is amended?
So move. Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1676, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving a policy for purchases less than $20,000, delegating authority. First reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
You don't have to amend it in.
Second. Hang on.
I can tell you why.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right. Ms. Ross?
I asked Mr. Carter today, is there's no... It says the detail, but there's no detail, so...
So I think it's been filed as a communication, the mayor's executive policy. So what, really what we're asking city council to do is to see that and bless that as a process for purchasing in amounts less than $20,000 as good fiscal controls. If you adopt this as part of the ordinance, it changes it really from an executive matter to a legislative matter. So my concern is, like right now, if somebody's gonna go over $20,000 bid limit, what do they have to do? They gotta come in here, right? If they make an error in that, they have to come here and ask for that to be ratified, ask for things to be waived. If they violate appropriations, what do they have to do? Come back to city council and say, "Please appropriate more money," you know, to cure the problem that we have. What we're trying to establish a policy here with is not as much a legislative control, it's an executive control. So it communicates to employees what their expectations are, where they... If somebody, say, violates one of these policies, they don't necessarily have to come back in here and stand in front of city council. What they have to do is go stand in front of the mayor's office and give an account for why they did that, and they'd be subject to all the disciplinary policies of the city.
Now, this is just under 20... This is under $20,000.
Yeah. So policies above $20,000 are gonna fall the same way they always have. Does that make sense?
Understand, training is forthcoming on this. Train... Some kind of training plan?
Because I think training's gonna be very important, and that's one of the things that we kind of clued in on. I think the mayor talked about it, you know, sometime in the middle of the year, was that we needed to get the policy down and then make sure it's communicated and trained across the workforce.
We've been working on that policy that you have a copy of for months, really. And we passed it out at staff meeting to all the department heads last Wednesday. And we even made them sign that they picked it up. So we're pretty serious about it, and I think by bringing this legislation here is we're saying that, not only to you, but to the department heads, is that we're serious, the council's serious, these are the rules, and we're all on the same page. So that's where we are.
If... There's a provision here that if this is modified, you'll be notified of any modifications. So you'll always know what the standard is of financial management within the city, what our rules are gonna be.
Okay, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1677, Alderman Vouch.
I would like to withdraw that at the request of the person who came forward with this. During the interim, from the request to actually getting it here, they kept it at another location and found that the pet does extremely well, or extremely more... Anyway, it does well in a herd environment. And she did not want to break it down into one or twos, and so she'll keep her pet at the alternate location. So rather than go through the...
Okay.
...you do, we'll just let it go away.
Thank you.
O-1680, Alderman Ross and White.
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning an alleyway running west from Share Street between West 25th Street on the north and West 24th Street on the south in the City of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
About a motion?
The move.
The move.
Second.
On the motion. Hold it. Ms. Ross?
This is just a comment. We have people all the time wanting the city to abandon these alleys behind their houses and everything, and we give them, you know, we tell them to get a petition and bring it to us. And I think Ms. Alonso's one of the first ones that's done multiple... You know, we've had one or two that maybe had one or two people on the block, but have multiple. I'm just really impressed. Thank you.
If Kay has anything to do with it, it'll be done right. Right, Kay?
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher concludes new business.
Thank you. Let's just move right on along to public comment, and we have one signed up. Stephen Powell.
Good evening. Can I pass these out?
Sure.
Mayor, while he's doing that, I would like to introduce my associate to you, just in case you forgot who she is. Ms. Becky Taylor.
Becky Taylor. Man, I know that name from somewhere.
And Becky will be filling in in my department while Caitlin is out on medical leave, and she will also be handling a council meeting in December while I'm out.
Well, we know how good Becky is, and so we're not even gonna second-guess that she'll run it just perfectly. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. My name is Stephen Powell, and we started the first and only licensed mobile barber shop in the state of Arkansas. We are a nonprofit. We only cater to senior We only cater to senior citizens, homelessness, senior centers, low income, and people with disability. We go all over the state. We started actually two years ago where we, uh, got licensed, but we was doing it with a tent. We was going to different homeless campsites, setting up, and then we contacted the Barber Board this year in March because we said, okay, we, we wanna make this bigger. We wanna make this where we go out everywhere, you know, and, um, so the Barber Board invited us to come in, and they said, well, hey, we love what you're doing, but stop right now because of sanitary reasons. We didn't have any running water. And two months later, they gave us permission. We are the first licensed mobile barber shop. And, um, we are, it all started with a dream I had. When I woke up out of it, I prayed about it, and on the third sheet is the reason why we do what we do, and the scriptures that we do is why we do it. We've been operating six months, and today we crossed over to eight hundred and seven people today. We started in July twenty-fifth is when we got our license. We, um, my reason for being here is because the Cosmetology Board and the, and the Barber, uh, State Barber Board, our agreement is before I do anything in the state, I have to have permission from the property owner that I can set up and cut hair. I never been, uh, well, I live in North Little Rock. I just bought a house in North Little Rock. We went out to Faulkner Lake Road, and I said, this will be a perfect place to have a fundraiser, 'cause there's no barber shop out there. And so I've talked to a local people out there, and they say, well, the city owns that golf course. So I called the city to get permission. They say, well, come in, we wanna know more about it, you're, uh, we love the idea, but we just need, we don't know how to license it. So, um, they told me to go talk to the code enforcer, and I did that, and then basically, I'm here right now. And, um, we don't charge. We go out, we cut hair for free. We have fundraisers, and on those fundraisers is we set up, uh, at a place like if a church invite us out, or, um, say if we talk to a local restaurant or something like that, and they say, hey, we, we love what you're doing, we would like to donate to you five haircuts. And we, they ask us how much per haircut, and we say, well, five dollars per haircut. That actually gets shampoo, conditioner, deodorant, things like that, so we can hand out to the homeless.
Well, my first blush would say that if you were having a fundraiser on city property, that you'd have to rent it. But all the other nonprofits that use our hospitality house or, or whatever else, they have to rent, so.
Okay.
We couldn't make an exception for, for you.
Okay.
Uh, right, counselor, do you agree with that?
I agree, and I think, uh, I've talked to Diane, who's also got her hand up over there, but I, I'm, I'm trying not to look in that direction. She's just trying to distract me from my thought.
I'm not looking over there either.
Right, but, uh.
You're gonna have to.
But, uh, uh, part of the concern is, how do we regulate it? You know, I mean, what, what's the business licensing process? What we always do is tie business licenses to physical addresses, you know, and, uh, what are our regulations in place? We've got, you know, regulations on food trucks, they're mobile vendors, they're selling food, they're doing things. You know, if they wanted to, uh, give food away, they'd still have to follow the same kinda process, the same procedures. You know, uh, I don't know that we have kind of the scheme about how to manage this yet. It sounds like a very intriguing, interesting idea, you know, uh, uh, obviously, uh, feels called to do it, but it's, I guess that's what we've struggled with, is do we have a regulatory framework to put this, to make this work, or do we need to build one, or, you know, how we need to move forward?
Is. Mayor? Hold on a minute. I'm not watching this, huh? What about, are you doing this in other cities, or are you doing it in Little Rock, and?
We do it all over the state of Arkansas.
Okay.
What we do is, um, we went far as Harrison, West Helena, Forest City, Camden, Arkansas, uh, Stevens, Arkansas, the farthest south. Uh, Fort Smith, we've been going pretty much, if they, we found out where a homeless camp is, that's where we go.
Is this a nonprofit?
Yes, sir. So far, we have five homeless enrolled in college, and we have two homeless that signed up barbers that were barbers but couldn't afford their license. So they went to Saint, I wanna say Saint Luke's Missionary in Little Rock, and, and they pay for their license, we got the clippers, and they help us on the weekends. And we also, um, we also, uh, have, uh, a mentor program out of this. Local schools contact us and want us to come out and set up, and right now, we're at Rockefeller Elementary. We go and, as those kids come out, they're getting their haircuts, we ask them what they wanna be when they grow up, uh, how they're doing in school, we check up on them, at least every two weeks in school. We go back once a month to cut their hair for free.
Ms. Whitby?
Okay, so several weeks ago, Mr. Powell contacted me. He had been set up on the golf course, and it had been advised he could not do that. So he contacted me and said that he had a business license with the city of Jacksonville, and I advised him if he was setting up at a location in North Little Rock, that we required licenses, and it was based on location. So he could get a license with us if he had permission from the property owner. But then when we determined the type of business, we don't have anything that falls under that. The only mobile type vendor we have is a mobile food vendor. So my concern, and when I spoke to Mr. Carter, was at the point that first we need to decide if we're going to allow a mobile barber, but once we do, then will we be allowing other types of mobile businesses? We do require that all nonprofits get a business license as well.
But they're free.
But they're free.
Mayor? Yes, sir.
I don't know if it'd be out of the question or ridiculous to ask, and I don't know what would do to the timeline and the process, but could we check with some of these other cities, like Jack, you said you're licensed in Fort Smith?
No, 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 we're, we're based out of Jacksonville, Arkansas. That's where we have to have a, we had, yes, sir, we have to have a brick and mortar, and our brick and mortar is out of Jacksonville, so the nonprofit is a, if it, is a different entity to that.
Okay, so Jacksonville's the only place that you have a privileged license?
Have a license from, but each place that I go to, I have to have permission from the property owner. That's what the barber, the state said, the Barber Board said.
But the only place you have a license, though, is in Jacksonville.
Is Jacksonville.
And you paid money for this license, is that correct?
No, it's free. Nonprofit, it's free.
Uh, I mean, could we not take the, uh, mobile food trucks and tweak it?
I think so. That's probably something that, uh, you know, we need to work with planning and work through, and I don't know if the fit is exact, but it seems like it would work by analogy. It seems like it would work. I think we just need to look at it and see if we can't get it, you know, put something together for the council to consider. And then I, I guess one thought would be whether or not you wanna route this through the planning commission to let them look at it and take their hack at what they think it ought to do.
You know, we spent so much time on food trucks that I don't know that we need to go through a huge process. We understand it. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Mr. Height?
This is a service you're providing. Correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's different in the services that landscape, uh, people, I mean, you know, people mowing grass and they're providing a service?
We have a category we can put them under.
Pardon me?
They're licensed out of their home. They're, they get a business license, but it's for a physical location, and that location is usually their home address.
You put an address on Clay Cut.
That's my home address.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's in my ward, so.
Well, why don't, why don't we give, give us a, a couple, two or three weeks to digest it? And, uh, let our lawyers look at it, along with our city clerk and our planning department. I don't think, you know, the concept is fine, you know, anytime we have an opportunity to help, the less fortunate we want to. So let us mess with it, and, you know, just, you've got his contact information. Okay. Ms. Ross?
And don't take this the wrong way, but we have mobile pet groomers. What's the difference in a mobile pet groomer? What classification are they under?
I don't think we have any licensed mobile pet groomers. Licensed mobile pet groomer?
We have pet groomers, I see them around town, so, okay.
Yeah, I've got a good friend that has, uh, they bring a trailer to his house.
I mean, it's the same, it's the same principle, but with humans.
Know who that is, and I'll be happy to call them.
Yeah.
Your friend's going to jail.
He's in the doghouse.